Thank you. Let us pray. God of all life, you call us to live in community and teach us to care for one another after the pattern of Jesus Christ, your son, our Lord. We pray tonight for those whose position and authority affect the lives of others, and ask that your spirit would inspire them with a vision of our community as it might be, where love of neighbor and concern for one another drive out discontent and strife, anxiety, and fear. Help us all to work together with one heart and one will, with sympathy and understanding, to serve the common good, to minister to people in trouble and despair, to multiply true happiness among us through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Good evening. It is Monday, March 3rd, 2025, and I call this city council meeting to order. Roll call, please. Here.
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 Is there anyone that would like to address the council at tonight's open forum?
Councilman Jobin, council members, I'm Kim Embertson. I'm the chair of the Public Arts Commission, as appointed by Mayor Anthony Hicks, and I wanted to present to you two paintings that we've now displayed here, thanks to Lynn Taylor's staff putting up the supports here. The paintings are part of a River Is project that was funded by the Lakes Region Arts Council and has been in several libraries and other places and now resides as a part of the permanent connection in the library here at Fergus Falls. We, as Public Arts Commission, we wanted to bring art now into the public in more ways, and so we've presented these here. The one to my right, up here behind you, is done by Scott Gunvalson. Some of you may be familiar with some of his work at the Senior Center, the mural on the backside of the Senior Center is part of his work, and he has pieces in quite a few of the commercial buildings all over town. Scott says when he does his paintings, he likes to see the time when the light changes the mundane to the extraordinary, and you can certainly see that in paintings like this, the way he's able to represent the light. The painting that's on my left over here is by Nancy Valentine. You may know her as one of the directors of the Cadiz Gallery. She paints in watercolor, and when she paints this one, she said she felt the river was dancing through the landscape. So this is a bird's eye view of the river coming from Phelps Mill all the way to Orwell Dam through our area. And when she uses watercolor, she sources her water from the river. So this is Otter Tail Water and her pigments. So she's very interested in how art interacts with the local life. And so the Public Arts Commission is glad to always look for ways to have art extend the economic vitality of the Fergus Falls community. We'll be changing these out every three or four months, so there'll be new pieces of art that we can share with you. The ones we're using currently are part of a library collection here in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Hi, my name is Kate. I'm from Fergus Falls, and my lips are a little numb, so if I slur, I apologize. These aren't my opinions and concerns, and they don't represent or speak for anyone on the staff or the board of the library. On the 3rd of February, the library's art policy was challenged by Kwame. He requested the word inclusion and the word equity be eliminated. Jobin Kildy gave the library a chance to respond and ask clarifying questions. The council then had the library director go back to the board and clarify the intention of the policy language. At the February 18th meeting, Mortenson questioned the director about the timeline of when the arts policy would be finished, roughly two months. The library director came back with an update and gave a clear timeline on when the arts policy would likely be addressed by the board. The library director then requested that the council confirm the other policies that the library had completed that were not being challenged. Kwame then said he would prefer not to pass them yet and wait for the final one, so they could all be passed at once. The thing is that the library director was already up there. The council could have easily honored the request that she had to pass the already completed and okayed policies. So if the library already has policies renewed and refreshed and waiting to go, why are they not passed? Essentially, the council simply got in the way of the workings of the library, however major or minor. Though they do not run the library every single day, nor are they able to understand in a boots-on-the-ground way how these policies are engaged with every single day by staff, board, and patrons. The council is here for the people. We elected you, and I believe the default should benefit the people. And in this instance, the library is the people. I'm not interested in the council that rules with a parental intent, defaulting with a no to a perfectly reasonable request. I feel the library has been hobbled unnecessarily, and instead of being able to cross completed items off their list, this lazy and arbitrary denial of a reasonable request is making it harder and less effective for our library board and the staff to do what they do best, serve our community. I don't believe that Kwame knows what's best for the kind of timeline that's appropriate for this library. He's not on the library board, nor is he a library employee, so why is he the one making a resolution to keep the library waiting? I trust the library to implement the policies in the timeline they deem appropriate, and I believe the original challenge by Kwame to these 15 letters in the art policy is a version of semantics. The library knows how to do its business better than you do. Trust them to know what language works best for them to reach and support their patrons. There's no need for council members to police the language of the public library. For example, if you question the golf course on their policy language, perhaps you deem the word cart to be inaccurate and would prefer that the golf course changed that to golf vehicle. Now you probably wouldn't, because engaging in semantics would be a waste of their time and the council's time. And I would hope that you would trust the golf course to know what kind of language to use for their patrons. I'm in Ward 4, and I want to say that I appreciate on January 6th, that Kildy said it was important for her to work respectfully and well with other people on the council, regardless of differences. I admire that and I support it. But it doesn't mean sitting back and letting unfounded challenges to the people and places in this community continue in the name of getting along. We felt you weren't standing up when you voted to have the library wait. Avoidance and passivity isn't where the work of getting along and being respectful lie. The real work is that in keeping an open heart and a clear head while standing up for the rights of your constituents in challenging and uncomfortable situations. My hope is that there are people who will call the city phone number pick option 3 and let you know that they actually trust the library to know what timeline and language best suits the needs of their patrons and staff. So, I ask that the council pass a resolution that honors the earnest and reasonable requests that the library director had on the 18th of February in approving the other policies to continue forward now as they spend the next couple of months revisiting the arts policy. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kate. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the open forum?
Dwayne Cookman, I live here in town. I wasn't going to come up this morning, or this evening here at all, I wasn't going to speak, but one of the words, and I truly believe with Kwame, equity. And I challenge, and I've seen this at work, I've seen that stuff in society, they equate that to equality. It is not. The definition of equity is, no matter where you start, you're all the same at the end. So, I truly believe that Councilman Kwame is correct, and if you want to put equality there, but equity is not good, and I think it's been misused, misused on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Anyone else like to speak at the open forum this evening? All right. The approval of the agenda.
Laura?
Yes?
I would like to move Consent Item 5, Consent Item 9, to F.
So we have two items that are requested to be removed from the consent agenda. Mr. Leighton, you said item number 5, which is the participation in a joint powers board for public transportation.
Correct.
And then number 9, participation in an RFP process led by West Central Initiative for the installation of solar panels on municipal buildings.
Correct.
Any additional changes to the agenda, Andrew, that you're aware of?
Your honor, members, no other changes that I'm aware of.
All right, we will need a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Kildy.
Second.
Thank you, Kwame. There are no public hearings? Oh, sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. There are no public hearings, bids to award or petitions, and communications on tonight's agenda. So we have eight... We have eight items of business, I got my papers mixed up, on tonight's consent agenda. Would anyone like to offer a resolution to approve the consent agenda?
I so moved.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Job.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Leighton.
Yes.
Freymeyer.
Yes.
Mortensen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Kildy.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. So as I understand it, we do have some questions regarding the joint powers board for public transportation. Mr. Leighton?
I was wondering if there's more information.
Would you like to... Can we have open discussion on this before? Okay, okay. What kind of information are you looking for?
That's a good question. When is... When are we going to do it? Are we going to do it? Has this board been named?
Kayla, would you like to come up and answer some of these questions? I appreciate that. Thank you.
I came up with it today and I forgot already, Kayla, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, if I heard you, it was, when are we going to do it, or how is it going to be done?
Yep.
So, you know, I came before all of you last Wednesday, just with the idea of this, and also mentioned that I'm going to three other government entities, which I've gone to one, one more tomorrow, and the last one next week. So, I'm really just inquiring if the city as a whole would probably be interested in this. If you all are just like a flat no, I'd rather know sooner rather than later, so I can make other plans. So, the joint powers board agreement actually is not in place yet. It's not created. We're starting to work on that, so I think that was part of your question, like just the agreement?
That very well could be. At this point, I would appreciate, I would make a motion to approve this joint task force.
A resolution?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kildy. Any additional questions for Kayla?
You know, Kayla, I think, as we talked before, it's very important, I think, for the city to be involved in some of this public transportation when you do almost 50% of your work right here in the city. What do you, what do you see the city's involvement, other than being on the board? What do you, what do you see the benefit of having us on this board with you? What do you see in that aspect?
I think you guys would be a great benefit for the fact that you just said we do a lot, the majority of the rides here. You can help create policies, our different routes, our fleet size, staffing, wages. If we can get a new building, which I want down the road, you can help make decisions in that aspect, too. It would just help me and all of our service areas with input from the city, basically because of what you said. We do the majority of the rides right here in Fergus.
So up to this point, the city has been funding you with like $50,000 a year, but that's the only involvement, and we've not had the ability to, to make the destiny of making public transportation better in the community until now, right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Roll call, please.
Job.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Leighton.
Yes.
Freymeyer.
Yes.
Mortensen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Kildy.
Kayla, thank you. The mission is to get it going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, we are looking for more discussion on the RFP process, solar panels on municipal buildings. And Mr. Leighton, again.
I appreciated the presentation at the committee of the hall. The young man did a very good job. I have attended some Hillsdale seminars on solar. I've seen the return. If this facility, if this, this project wasn't totally supposedly 100% grant-funded, the life of the panels are 30 years, and the life of savings is 30 years. We boil this down to about a $3,000 annual savings for the liquor store. I think moving forward, for the sake of everyone's time, hard money spent, additional agreements, et cetera, for 3,000 bucks, I believe there are more important things. I have all the carbon information you want to know on, on solar. I move that this be permanently removed from the agenda.
Your honor, Councilman Leighton, it's pretty, it's proper to have the resolution before the council and the affirmative, and then have individuals vote against that resolution as opposed to having a negative resolution? So I would suggest allow somebody to make the resolution in the affirmative and then vote no if that's your conscience.
Help me.
Somebody else is going to have to help you. There you go.
I'll make the motion to approve this on the agenda.
The RFP process?
Yes, RFP process. Now, with that, and you have a second, and now, if we don't like it, vote against it, and then that'll fail. You can't vote on a negative, as I've learned that.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question, your honor?
Someone's got a second.
Oh, second, sorry. I can second it.
Okay, thank you, Kildy.
Are we going out for RFP only on the liquor store? Are we looking at the... Just to clarify, we're just looking at the liquor store at this point?
Right now, it's just the liquor store.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this?
Yes, your honor, I appreciate it. I was the one that seconded the motion when we had a committee of the hall. I think the motion was just about ready to fail that morning. I think if I hadn't seconded it, it probably would not have went forward. I did then, in the sense to give some of our other colleagues on the council the time to talk about this, that were absent that day with it, but, and I wanted to have more discussion about it. I think there's some things that are concerning for us in regards to this matter, concerning for me at this point, going forward. One is the initial output of $140,000 for the projects, concerning to me when we've got other issues that are at hand that we're working on, one, with economic development, two, we're working on the Big Woods. So that, that initial payout, if I was doing this from a business standpoint, maybe wouldn't happen at this particular moment. The other thing that concerned me, and I appreciated his presentation very much, but West Central Initiatives and, and his process has not, they don't have a huge background of doing this. And one of the things that I do in business is when I'm looking at something, I usually want to ask, hey, what, what has happened before? What, what's your success? Is this thing generating the power we really think it's generating? So I can go off of that and make a great decision. Off of this project, at this point, I'm just not sure there's enough background to, to show us that, hey, this is successful. So, in that sense, it's a little bit risky. Not saying it isn't the future, I'm not saying it's something we should revisit, but to me, that was, that was concerning a little bit.
Other items are the executive order to kind of eliminate the Inflation Reduction Act, which had much of the electric being stopped at the federal level. The city doesn't file a tax return, so it'd be interesting to find from an accountant's opinion if the city would even qualify for the IRS refunds. We understand that that did not happen in Morse, so I still stand that we should not move forward on this.
Any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions, your honor. Okay, Mr. Leighton, and I totally respect where you're coming from, on where your, where your number analysis is, but our paperwork is showing $4,400 in annual savings, and you referred to 3,000. Has that been revised down, or is the 4,400 in our packet accurate?
The 4,400 was presented, and then when they talked about insurance and warranty, it was another 1,500.
For both.
So now it's now the...
That's where we're getting that, okay.
2,900, but I rounded it up, given the benefit of the doubt.
So without taking into account the insurance piece of it, we're looking at a lifetime savings of about $150,000. So that's without the insurance piece.
Right. And I don't think you can go without insurance on a roof. So what's 29 times 30? 2,900 times 30, so.
Just a comment, too, as far as an investment. There again, I'm not saying that this isn't a good thing down the road. I think right now, if we've got a margin of $2,900 a year with an investment of $140,000, I would never take that as a personal investment. Over 30 years, who knows what's going to happen in 30 years with equipment and things of that nature? That's why I'm a little bit, a little shy of this, just due to the fact that I don't think there's a big enough return on the investment. I mean, 30 years is a long time to wait. A lot of things will happen in 30 years.
Yeah, 2,900 times 30 years is 87,000. So our $150,000, $149,000 investment, there is no return. I think we're just ahead of the game here.
Your honor, this would be coming back to us to approve. This is not a final approval, is that correct?
Correct. This is just to go out, this is a request to go out for RFP. And as a clarification, there's grant funding, and I just wanted to clarify that for the public. Incentives, yeah.
I'm not so sure what the motion was, but I want to, I want to stop the activity in the city on the, the solar.
Roll call, please.
Job.
Yes.
Kwame.
No.
Leighton.
No.
Freymeyer.
No.
Mortensen.
No.
Rachel.
No.
Kildy.
No.
That motion, or that resolution fails. Next on our agenda is a childcare project manager contract, and we'd like Community Development Director Clara Beck to provide more information.
Thank you, Acting Mayor and Council. Yes, we have been awarded $20,000 from West Central Initiative for a childcare project manager. And after a period of having a call out, looking for somebody to fill that role, we did get an application from one Katie Gano, who you might know from Otter Cove Children's Museum downtown. She has an excellent background in early childhood education and childcare initiatives. We did only get the one response to the RFQ, but it was after the RFQ was placed both on our city website, on our Facebook page, and then sent out via email to a contact group of about 80 people, each of whom also have their own contacts in the childcare realm. So it was, it was well-publicized in the area. We want somebody regional, so it was all maintained within this, this region. But we did get, I guess it's more like one and a half, we had one other person who was interested, but she had just retired. She's like, I'll do it, but only if you don't make me write any grants. And I'm like, well, that's probably a pretty big part of it. So she did not end up applying, but we did get our information from Katie Gano. Again, she is a highly qualified candidate. She just recently transitioned to a new career path, so she's got some different time commitments that allow her to fit this into her schedule, which I think is going to serve us very well from a capacity standpoint. There are several projects here in Fergus Falls for childcare that are like right on the precipice of moving forward, but we really need somebody who can be dedicated to helping make connections between funders and educators who are looking for that funding and making connections between buildings and builders and things like that to get stuff really moving. So, I'm really excited to have Katie's information in front of you today, and I hope that you will approve the contract and allow her to just hit the ground running. I will also say that she has been instrumental in the creation of the plan that we are going to be using to direct the work of the project manager. She's been part of the RCCIP process from the beginning. So she, there isn't going to be any downtime to getting her up to speed on what Fergus Falls is looking for. She's been there since day one, and she's ready to get going. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll make the motion first.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Rachel's and Kildy, questions?
I just...
Go ahead.
I just think that we, you know, whatever we can do for this childcare in the city, anything we can do to make it better, not that it's a bad, but just not enough of a model, and everybody's looking for childcare. There's people going to try, to Battle Lake, Underwood, all over town. I have a worker that works for, works for me, and he's, he said it was the hardest thing he had to do about it. The kid was easy, it was, it was trying to find daycare to get there, and so I think anything we can do to make this better is a good thing, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Yes, Scott.
Clara, you mentioned that Katie is, how'd you put it, a new career path?
Yeah.
I'm sure there are many who are curious, is she still the executive director at the museum, or children's museum, or is she finding a way to do more than one thing?
She is going to be leaving that position. The reason she's not here tonight is actually she's at her last board meeting for Otter Cove. I know that she has greatly enjoyed her time there, but she is looking for something new and to maybe get back a little bit more to her roots that are in early childhood education. She's done a huge amount for Otter Cove to get them on the map as, as an educational location and an actual museum. And she's done some huge work to get them on the map statewide, so I think, I'm sure that board is very grateful to her, but I think she has even greater things in her future.
I appreciate that. I think that most people would agree that she's done a wonderful thing there, and we appreciate the existence of the Otter Cove and her efforts there, and so it sounds like a good opportunity for the city.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Yes, your honor. Clara, thank you for the information. One of the questions I have, and, well, first off, we, childcare, daycare, I seen in the packet, it was 47% is where we're at. There's no doubt that this is an issue. There's no doubt that we need somebody to get in there and get this done. And I, I don't know Katie, but her resume looked great, so this has nothing to do with that. But one of the things that I want to know is, is how did this come to the city? How did we get involved in this process?
Oh, gosh. Well, the city's been involved in discussions of childcare since before I even started with the city, so well before 2019. It's, it's an ongoing conversation that involves people in all sectors. So you have members of every government agency, including the county, including state, who are part of these conversations regularly. So we've been working with other entities for, for quite a long time to get to this point.
So I appreciate that. What I'm looking for more specifically is how did this grant come to the city of Fergus Falls?
Oh, I see.
Is this something you applied for?
Yes.
Or is this something that, that they approached you with, or?
I guess I don't remember exactly how I found out about the grant, but we did apply for it. Yes, the council voted to apply for the grant, which we did.
Okay. One of the things that I have a concern from, from a legal or a business standpoint, if our attorney is here, that, like I said, I want this to go forward, but what is this applicant's connection to West Central Initiatives? One of the things, are they part of their liaison? Are they part of theirs as an employee? I know they do something through West Central Initiatives for Otter Tail County, as well as being selected for this grant money.
Yeah, so part of Katie's current role, even now as she's serving as executive director of Otter Cove, is, I think what you're referencing is her early childhood, oh, what's that? It's the Otter Tail County ECI, Early Childhood Initiative, which is a group that's focused on advocacy and... on advocacy and support for childcare providers. Right now, that group is not necessarily affiliated with West Central Initiative because its fiscal host is Otter Cove, but with Katie leaving Otter Cove, the fiscal hosting will be going to West Central Initiative for that group.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
And that's a separate funding source that is just funneled in through that entity.
And I appreciate that. I think my concern with it, I know we only have one applicant here. So I mean, my concern is, though, as a city entity, we received money from West Central Initiatives through a grant.
It's state funding, actually.
State funding, but West Central Initiatives was involved with it, right?
Yes, they received the state funding in order to make micro grants.
Yeah. And then we turn around and we take a person that has a connection to West Central Initiatives through their liaison, which is on their website today, and then we pay that individual for things with the county that she kind of does. And what I'm worried about is just the perception of that. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm not questioning the individual. I'm not questioning West Central Initiative. It was the only applicant. But when a constituent comes to me and says, "Hey, you know, this person was connected with West Central Initiatives, and now you're paying them with a West Central Initiative's grant," I don't know how to answer that, other than say she was the only applicant. So it's...
Well, you could look at the contract where it lays out specifically what her role is going to be for the city of Fergus Falls, and it also has a clause in there about not having any conflicts of interest. She is required to report to us any conflicts.
Yes, and I seen that. I went through it, and it's number 12 in the actual contract where it's her conflict of interest. And so if she's representing Otter Tail County and West Central Initiatives, and we're asking her now to go and represent with West Central, Otter Tail County, and West Central Initiatives, it just, it doesn't smell right to me, and I'm concerned about that, where I think that somewhere along the line is the council maybe could have been told that, "Hey, there is a connection here." Now, I'll vote for it today. I'm going to vote for it. We need this. I think it's a stellar individual. I just, I wondered why it was listed on her credentials that she was with West Central Initiative, but we didn't know it in our packet tonight. Our packet just listed her as Executive Director of Otter Cove. And so I had concern with that. And I want to make sure the public knows exactly what we're looking at here, that this individual has a connection, but we're going to go forward with this for the good of the community and for the good of daycare, so we can get more of that done here. And that was my thoughts.
Okay, that's great. I'm just going to say that it, all of her application materials are in the packet. So it does say what her role is. And again, her role is not specifically with West Central Initiative at this time. She's worked, she lists the Otter Tail County ECI, which does do work with West Central Initiative, but she is not an employee of West Central Initiative, just to be very clear. And I did note in the memo that she works with the ECI. So I feel like that information is there.
Your Honor, my history has been funding daycare and adult care for years, decades. I'm looking at the executive summary. And again, I have nothing against Clara Beck. I have nothing against this person who's coming. I have nothing against West Central Initiative. These are the points that I have witnessed for decades. When I first ran, people asked me about daycare in Fergus Falls, and I says, "Well, that's a state matter." I really don't think it's a fundamental of Fergus Falls. The problem is at St. Paul. I'm looking at the events, the executive summary here. It says numerous rules and regulations, low pay, no benefits, long hours, high operating costs, et cetera. These studies have been going on for decades. And again, just for public knowledge, I'm trying to figure out what return has Fergus Falls got in actual daycare presentation or operations from this, when did this thing start? You said it was '19, before you came.
Well, not specifically the work that you're referencing there. That's, what you're referencing is the Rural Childcare Innovation Program, which the city did through First Children's Finance. The conversations as a whole have been happening before I started. The First Children's Finance work started, I think, in 2022.
What is the ultimate goal, then, that West Central Initiative has and the county has, other than studies and more research and more memos? How do we establish a daycare? A real operating daycare?
Are you asking me as a representative of the city, or?
I'm just asking a question.
Sure.
Answer is what authority you wish. I'm concerned that the money's just going to go for more studies, more salaries. I'm looking for something material. And I agree, this is a hot topic. I've been involved with it for a long time, and I saw when it was done with real moms and dads out of their home, real moms and dads with a larger 24 by 24 two-story home that had adult residents, and the state government ruined it.
Sure. Maybe I can bring it back to the contract that we'd be having with Katie Gano, which would have some pretty particular outcomes that we're looking for that are based on the update to the plan that you have in your hand there. So there are several projects, like I mentioned earlier, that are looking for help to get off the ground. So we have a nature school that is in need of some help to get up and running, including finding a location. And then we have at least two different programs currently running in Fergus Falls that need assistance to grow their programming and find new locations to be. So that is, those projects are specifically what Katie would be focusing on for the city.
Clarification on that. Is the nature school going to be licensed as a childcare facility, or how does that licensure work?
I think she's still kind of trying to figure out exactly what her next steps are. And again, this is something that somebody like Katie could help her with.
Absolutely.
Then First Children's Finance could help her.
I was just curious because it's an interesting overlap.
Yeah. I think she's had different ideas depending on the space that she's found to be available, and so it's nebulous at this point.
Okay, so we have a resolution on the floor approving a contract for childcare project management services. Roll call, please.
Joe.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Layton.
Yes.
Craymeyer.
Yes.
Mortensen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution passes.
Your Honor, I just have a second. This would be a question more for Andrew or Clara, whichever can kind of address it. We've been seeing a lot of stuff come through the Committee of the Whole, you know, even like we're going to talk about the speaker system today, the solar panels, everything like that. Is, and I'm asking for clarification, how come this one with what we just passed here didn't come through the Committee of the Whole? I think it would have been beneficial to come through there and give us a lot of deep discussion. Give me the reason why it does or doesn't, so I can understand, I guess.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember Mortensen, the reason this particular one didn't is because Clara had missed some time last week for her husband's grandfather's funeral, and just logistically, it didn't work out. And given the way the calendar falls, where we have work sessions or economic development sessions on March 12th and 26th, in essence, it would have pushed it out to, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but it would have been like April 9th to get to a Committee of the Whole, and then the middle of April before we even were able to approve this, thus delaying about a month and a half. So this is the exception, not the norm, and those are the circumstances around this particular one.
Okay. Clara, sorry for your loss. Thank you for the clarification.
At the February 26 Committee of the Whole meeting, there was a presentation on proposed upgrades to the City Council Chambers' technology. The city's IT manager, Dan Knudsen, is here tonight to provide us some more information.
Yeah, he's right here, Your Honor. Maybe if there's questions that you have, Dan can be prepared to answer them. And just one thing, I will say, the microphone stand there in front of Dan.
I already noticed it.
Yeah, see, we do quick work. We mentioned at the Committee of the Whole on Wednesday that was going to be fixed. It looks like Dan was all over that. That works well. And then if there's any questions beyond what was presented on Wednesday morning, Dan's the guy to answer them. So we asked him to help us and, or to join us tonight and help us through this discussion. So if there's a larger conversation that you all want to have related to technology in this room, this is the guy. I'll just stop there and see what questions you have.
Mr. Knudsen, I want to appreciate all the time that you and I have spent. It's been years since I've worked on this. The microphone stand is really for the platform guy out there who stands 6'2". So that's very nice. And I hear it doesn't squeak when you move it. Very, very nice. And I thank Lynn and yourself for, if you will, the additional aids that we have here for the public and myself. I think it's a great step. Thank you very much. And I'll make a resolution that we go.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, all right. Scott, Rachel, thank you. Is there any questions that we specifically have for Dan moving forward?
Yeah, Dan, thanks for being here tonight. The one question I have is, we're going to spend $8,000 on something here in this room. Has, and we're going to go from a 4-inch speaker to a 6.5-inch speaker and a few other additional speakers. Have you had a chance to talk to anybody or has any staff and talked to any other council chambers, any other cities, any other clients of this particular product to say, "Hey, you know what? We're really happy with the upgrade to 6.5 over this," or "It works very well"? Because I'm just saying for myself, I think if someone came and asked us, we might say, "Hey, there's some things lacking in our chambers with the 4-inch one." Do we know if other people are satisfied with what we're buying because we're really not looking at it? We don't know what we're getting.
Yes, I think out at the Big Wood Event Center, Bloom Technologies did that project as well. I would say we're relying on their expertise for what they're putting in the room. I don't know that we've gone out anywhere else to say, "Well, you know, 4-inch or 6.5-inch speaker is bigger, better." Really, the point is just that these speakers are years old, and they're probably due to be replaced anyway, and we just want to replace them with something bigger and better so that everyone can hear in the room. That's really the point.
Could I make a mention? Also, too, now, we do have Digital Guru now in town, a local business. And I know that they do sound systems and things of that nature. It might be just worth a phone call, just to have somebody else take a peek at it, too. You know, if it's somebody local, that might be a good point, too. So I know they do a lot of different sound systems throughout the area and different towns and things of that nature. So that might be something to look at.
Okay, thank you.
I think you got the same letter. We got a letter today, or last week, about a constituent about how our system works in here and how it doesn't pick up on TV. And of course, the biggest thing is getting this thing in front of your, and everybody does a pretty good job, except for, I can't pick on Rolf tonight, but I would if he was here. And so I think that's the biggest part of us, what's going on. But I know the upgrade, we're going to do the speakers and stuff, and that's the same company did out at the Big Wood. So I'm all in favor, anything we can do to make it better, to hopefully it works better in here. And then if we can make it better with our mics in front of us, for the people at home can hear us, so.
Your Honor, I raised some questions when Scott was gone on Wednesday about this, too. I think the feedback from the people at the desk standing up and going to the mic, I think is going to be huge for the people walking, watching online, because they're just not getting it off the table, which I know is kind of a pain for the staff. But I think it's going to maybe be necessary.
Yes, and part of that proposal is also dual channel for the people at home that either watch over YouTube or on our local TV station. That'll vastly improve the sound quality as well.
And just, if you listen to it, I listened to a council meeting when I was in Florida, and most of, everybody does a good job, but when you don't, when they don't set up that mic and get that mic, and you can't hear nothing. And I know Rolf was part of it. And so anything we can do to make it better for the TV, because we have, our TV audience go up, we're watching because they can't hear nothing. They can see us make the gestures or whatever. But so that's, I'm going to definitely vote for this, so.
Your Honor, and I agree with Mr. Rachel's and Ms. Kildy that the number one goal is to make it better. But I want to dive one step deeper when I say, "Hey, are we sure we're making it better?" The person selling us the product says that it's better, but have we talked to anybody that has the product to say, "Hey, it's better"? I don't want to waste $8,000 and some dollars on people's money, and we aren't any better. I want somebody to at least say, "Hey, yeah, we've got that system, and we're really happy with it." It's kind of like when you're looking at a car, you can say, "Hey, we're going to get this different car, and it's so much better." But really, is it better? So I don't want to waste our money until we've at least talked to somebody to say, "Hey, it's better." And I think if they are the Minnesota League of Cities provider, there's got to be somebody out there in a council chamber that's had this put in, that has a 6.5-inch, that's either happy or not happy. So what I would like to see, I'd just like staff just to hold up just a minute and make a few phone calls, whether they make a phone call to Digital Guru or to these guys, to say, "Hey, give us just a list of two or three people that have the system we're putting in to make sure they're happy." If we made a phone call, and all three of them on the list said, "Don't do it," then we should have never done it. We didn't get what we wanted. We maybe need 8-inch in our chambers. That's all I'm looking at, is to confirm when we're spending taxpayer money that we're getting something better, not just told it's better.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mortensen, I do. Is there some conversation you can have with Bloom to say, "Hey, you know, this is satisfaction and then payment"?
Yes, what I'll do is I'll contact them and see if I can get a list of references that they can provide me to give a call to other partners, other institutions that they have put systems in, and see what they can give me.
Yeah, because I don't know if this unit, this, if you will, the AMP, the pre-AMP, were the same of other communities. I don't know the other rooms are the same size. I think if, to protect Mr. Mortensen's position, is as long as Bloom knows that this council wants to be happy, and we want it to be audible in the House and in TV, and would they stand behind it if we under-engineered it or we over-engineered it? So, thank you.
Your Honor, a couple of things. Thank you for your time on this. And I agree with Mr. Mortensen that it's good to get references, but I have just spearheaded in the last couple of years a complicated sound system in another location. And part of when you're getting references, that's important, because we went through that process, was at our church, is that each room is different. And so when someone says an 8-inch works for them or a 6-inch works for them, I think it's really important that we're keeping in mind that all of our spaces are different from city to city. And I guess the second thing I would say is, if this ends up getting tabled tonight, I think it's really important that we reach out and we work with JIM and PEG Access to make sure that the upgrades that we're doing, because that TV part and the streaming part is such a big deal, to make sure that they're on board with what we're doing, and if there's any suggestions coming off of PEG Access.
I would agree with Laurel. Thank you for that. I think PEG Access should be involved with that.
Laurel, are you going to offer a motion to table?
I can, I think with the intent of moving forward at some time, but I'm just making sure we have all the information. I will offer that.
I'll second.
I think there is a motion.
There's a resolution on the floor.
We have to vote the first motion down before you can make a second motion.
Right.
One other thought I had in listening to this conversation, which I think is a good conversation, but one thing I would suggest is if we could get your approval contingent on successful references, and we'll do exactly what Dan just mentioned. We'll get a list, we'll contact those individuals, and we'll report back to all of you, whether it's via email or at a future meeting. Let me back up. We'll pause if the references aren't stellar and bring that back. If they are good, I'd hate to delay this, because as I mentioned on Wednesday at the Committee of the Whole, if we get too far down the road here, they start shifting their focus to school projects. As schools come out, and that's the time they do these technology upgrades. So if acceptable, you know, I would suggest that we approve this contingent on us verifying successful references. We'll let you guys know as soon as that happens. That can happen this week.
We can make amendment.
And then we don't have to wait for a future meeting to get the final go-ahead.
Can that also be contingent on us sit down with PEG Access to make sure they're on the same page with the next steps?
Absolutely. Yep.
Should I re?
Make the amendment?
Should I amend my?
If you wished to.
I make a motion.
Resolution.
Amendment to the motion.
Amend your resolution.
I'm going to amend my motion.
It's a resolution. You're going to amend your resolution.
I'm going to do something. And Lynn, you just put it down where it's supposed to be. I, I move that we proceed with this contract with Bloom, subject to them working with PEG, and a guarantee that we won't pay until we're happy. And if that means they bring six inches and 10 inches and 15 inches down, they should be prepared. Thank you.
How about the?
Contingent on successful references?
Sure. Thank you.
That's the biggest thing, I think. Scott, you were the second.
And I'll second with that.
Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Braymire.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
That passes.
Thanks, Dan.
Next, we have the presentation of claims. Would anyone like to?
I will offer that.
Thank you, Laurel and Scott Rachel's. Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
There is no old business or unfinished business. Yes.
You going to new business?
I am.
Your Honor, may I speak?
Yes.
Bear with me, please.
Did you want something added to the agenda?
I'm going to add it to the agenda.
That needed to be done at the beginning.
No, it, future agenda, sir.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to discuss at the next Committee of the Hole zoning for Mr. Long's man cave.
Can you give us some additional information on that?
Yes. This man and family has bought a lot across the road and kitty corner from their primary residence, and he would like to put a shop there. And he's always used the word shop, a man cave. And the current zoning indicates that you can't have a standalone garage without a primary residence. I'm trying to define what a primary residence is for this zoning, and Clara's helped me a great deal. I would like it to come to the, the Committee of the Hole and discuss it in more detail. Can he build a 36 by 36 garage with a restroom and a little bedroom and use it as a garage? I just want it to be presented for discussion.
Yes.
712 Springon Avenue is the address of the constituent. Yep, and it would be.
Your Honor, is it something, this is coming off of the Planning Commission. This is a topic the Planning Commission has kind of danced around for a while as to what to do with these accessory structures with plumbing, how, if they qualify as a residence, if they don't. Is this something that we can simply direct the Planning Commission to look at? That tends to be, I think, how the process works to start this. Is that, I don't know, Clara, can you speak to that?
That, that was my suggestion, yes, is that this goes to the Planning Commission for review.
I will amend my motion then to bring it to the Planning Commission. May I ask when the next Planning Commission is?
Yep.
I'll second that. It's normally the fourth Monday.
Two Mondays from now, right? Two Mondays from now.
The fourth?
Oh, yeah, it's the?
24th.
24th.
March 24th.
Thank you. That's my motion. And Laurel, did you second it?
I did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
We've been talking about this exact same thing for a long time, probably 10 years, trying to figure out how to do this. And so this is a good process for us to step up and just instead of dancing around it, get it done. I, I think it should be the best thing, but it's not the first time it's been, this is, yeah, it needs to be taken care of.
I, I would appreciate some help for this man. Your Honor, again, I would like to make a motion to bring to the next Committee of the Hole, the Big Wood Event Center, and what we're going to do with it.
So you're asking for discussion on Big Wood Event Center at our next Committee of the Hole meeting?
Yep. We need to establish a task force, if we need to get something going on this. Obviously, when I ran, this thing has been bleeding the city for years. It's not going to stop. I think we need to get some action, and that's the purpose of my motion.
Your Honor, would it be appropriate to ask Mr. Leighton to change that to a closed session, being that we're discussing real estate based on the update that's been provided to the city on the current status of the sale out there?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Leighton, my intent, my intent was to bring it at the next City Council meeting, two weeks from tonight, in a, in likely a closed session to discuss, report back based on the last motion that, that the council approved in January, and then to give a brief update on potential real estate transaction out there. So if, if, actually, and I'll be honest with you, the next council meeting's quicker than the next Committee of the Hole because, like I mentioned earlier, we're scheduling into April Committee of the Holes right now with the March 12th and 26th Economic Development.
A closed meeting would be fine. I just want to establish a plan. This has been talked about for years. Maybe not as long as 10, Scott, but it's been a long time. We need to make a motion, we need to make a decision, and we got to go forward on it.
Your Honor, maybe Andrew, what, what was the date you were looking at so we can lock that down? Is it the next council, March, like probably about 17th or whatever it is?
Yeah, two weeks from tonight, March 17th.
I'll, I'll second the motion to bring it to that in a closed session, if, if that's where the motion's at.
And just to discuss, we don't, I mean, we don't have to make the motion, but if Andrew just said he was going to put it on the agenda for a closed session, that's kind of how it comes to form, and all, it's official, but if he was going to put it on, that's kind of how it works anyway. It's going to be, it's going to be on closed session anyway, so.
I made the motion not knowing that.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but yeah.
We got a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Any additional new business for this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, I've got just a, a couple of things. I'll go very quick. I've had a constituent reach out that has a desire that I, I agree with. He'd like to see the, the U.S. Constitution on display here in the chambers. So it's nothing that we need to discuss today, but I would like that to be on the radar of the council and maybe city administration, that I think there's, there's nothing wrong with that from my, my view, so I want that to be discussed. The other thing I want to talk about a little bit is, I'd like to make a motion to discuss the lodging tax that the city receives here in an upcoming Committee of the Hole. This doesn't have to be in the next two weeks because, or next two sessions because they're very packed, but somewhere along the line, I would like to look at the lodging tax that is going on in the city. Right now, Visit Fergus Falls, and someone, correct me if I'm wrong, gets about a 3% lodging tax. We take a little bit for the, kind of the oversight of that project. What I'd like to see is the legal ability or the council's appetite to take 3% more percent on top of that and take that 3% to be used for economic development for our city. So what I'm looking at here, this would be 3% going to Visit Fergus Falls to do the things they do. We're not disrupting it at all. And 3% coming into the city to help us fund economic development. It would be part of the economic driver to get this city moving and be able to do things on an economic value. I'm not asking for anything other than maybe the council's ability to put this on a Committee of the Hole that's upcoming. I think it's important for our community. It's important for the success of the economic development of our community. I don't know the legal ability to do it, and maybe Andrew can speak to it here.
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Mortensen, I don't want to do that offhand. I actually, completely unrelated to this, read the statute today, so I probably could tell you what it says, but I'm not going to because I don't want to misspeak. We'll be more prepared for that at upcoming Committee of the Hole.
I appreciate that. As long as we could, if the council has an appetite to look at it, I'd make a motion that we bring it to a Committee of the Hole within the next 60 days.
I'd second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Your Honor, I have one last one. Mr. Mortensen, you at the floor.
Mr. Leighton, go ahead. I'll finish up and then I won't be anymore.
In efforts to get this council moving, again, I ask, at the next Committee of the Hole, whenever it's feasible, probably maybe, I'm going to make the motion. The Committee of the Hole receives RFPs that would come up in March, April, and May for discussion and review.
Can I just ask a quick question? This is probably not going to come up until April. So do you want to do April, May, June?
Sure. Unless there's something in March that is going to come in front of the council anyway.
Your Honor, Councilmember Leighton, can I ask you clarification? Are you, are you asking for, if there's any contract, contracts for the city or contractual obligations of the city that are expiring in those months to be made aware of them so you could then determine if they should go out for RFPs? Because I can tell you offhand that there's nothing RFP-related that would be happening in those next three months. But if you're asking about expiring contracts and whether or not they could go out for an RFP process, that kind of gives us, I think, additional clarity on what you're looking for.
That's the intent of the motion. Thank you, Andrew.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Just a little note of business, just kind of point of order. We have an upcoming, kind of an economic development at our March 12th and March 26th Committee of the Hole meetings. I want to tell the council, based off their direction, when we said we wanted to go forward looking at economic development, that I have secured a speaker that the mayor had asked me to reach out to that will be able to present at the 12th and the 26th. And it is a West Fargo Economic Development Director that is very, very excited to assist the city in any questions that they have related to economic development, but then on top of that, is very, very excited that if we go down this route in the future, that they want to have a, a partnership, a collaboration with, with our city and to help both our cities grow, Fergus Falls and West Fargo. So no motion needed. The mayor had asked me to secure this for the 12th and the 26th. I'll work with Andrew and Lynn to work out the details and have them connect up with the individual. So it's just kind of a, a point of order, which is, I think, very exciting for our community.
Thank you.
And also too, I think when we talked about this the last time, that really, any community members, please come. I mean, this is good things for everybody to hear. I want everyone involved, everybody to have a voice. So, you know, thank you for coming here tonight, but I want to see this continue so people can, you know, see what's going on and not be surprised, and they can ask questions. And I think, Mike, was it the first work session? It was going to be a, I'll let you explain that.
So I'll, I'll get with Andrew and Lynn, but the first work session with this economic developer will be virtual, their first part of it, so like 7:15 to 7:45. They have other commitments at 8 o'clock, and they're going to kind of set the groundwork for, this is what we do, this is maybe what you're looking for, these are maybe the things that you do well now, these are maybe some of the things that are lacking. I don't want to speak for the, the individual that's going to present. But then the second session on the 26th, they will be here in person to actually be able to, to sit down with the council, sit down with city staff and just guide us. Again, this is just like in business, you bring somebody in that's smarter than who you are to help you determine the path that you go, but the unique thing about this is that this relationship with this individual won't just end after these two sessions, we're hopeful, that this relationship will carry on for the city of Fergus Falls, carry on to maybe some economic development that they can't do that maybe we can do, or we can't do that they can do. And I think this paramount to, to doing the right things for our community. So I'm just, I'm just letting you know that this will occur on the 12th and 26th for the public, and I hope the council and administration is excited to at least explore it.
Your Honor, Councilmember Kildee just asked me if those meetings would be streamed, and for the benefit of the public, yes, those will be streamed. So if you're not able to be here at 7:00 AM on those dates, Councilmember Braymire's point, certainly tune in and be engaged in whatever fashion, so.
You know, just another thing, I think, you know, we were going to talk about the Maulstroms too, you know, what we were going to do with that after our meeting with them. So I think that's going to be part of the agenda in one of those times, one of those days. So not, I don't know this person in West Fargo, but, you know, I still want to discuss both, both sides of it, not just one path, you know, so.
Many spokes to the wheel. There's many spokes to the wheel.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and thank you, you guys led me to the, you know, miscellaneous announcements here.
Yeah, there we go.
You know, March 12th, that's good. March 12th, we are going to have a council work session on economic development from 7:00 to 9:00 AM. March 17th, we have a City Council meeting, and then March 26th, again, we are going to go into that work session on economic development. Al, did you have anything to close this?
One more thing, you know, I just wanted to, from what I heard from this person in West Fargo, is a comment I believe she made, and Mike can, can verify that, yes or no. But one of her comments was, you know, not everybody wants to live in Fargo, North Dakota. It might not be where a business be there. She said, there's things, she's very well connected to these different businesses and industries, and, you know, we, to you sitting in the front row, thank you. You know, the arts were a great thing in this city, and I thank you for that. And that does draw people because it's a community that lets the kids, it's a great opportunity. So I think you can pat yourselves on the back, you guys, with that because you helped grow that in this city. And I will sit and say, yes, you did, and I appreciate it very, very much. And that's what I like about this idea of a collaborative event with a very large city to a city like ours. And if we can work together, you know, we don't want to be in competition. We want to work together with different cities. And people are going to say, hey, this is pretty cool here, you know? So thank you, I just wanted to bring that up to you in the front row. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, with no other business items on the agenda, we will adjourn this meeting. No gavel, no.